Actually, we kick it off for a call the. Meeting to order tonight here, Leo Brown here, Leo Brown here. Uh, we are, it's the policy subcommittee meeting, may make sure I have the right. Information in front of me. We are going to focus today on um. Section G. And section H, I'm not mistaken, uh, I think Jim, you shared those. And um. And then we'll also look at, look at schedule, I mean, I can pull it up, may, we wanna look at that one more time, are we good in terms of? Um, but I just talked to it, high level, today, we're gonna try to focus on G and H. And um. We've scheduled out. All the way through the end of December, section I in. Two weeks, the twenty seventh, section J on the third of November. And then K on December one and L on December one. And I think one comment um for Michael and Jeff, I think especially uh what Jim said before for section I and J. Definitely highly recommend you guys review those. Um, in advance, you know, before our meeting.
Wasn't why I already said.
Yeah, no, the one thing that I I've said in in um. Part of the reason why I've kind of held off on voting on A and B. I do wanna have almost like a formal check process that once um, you know, we've taken Jim's revisions and we. You know, this. We, we, Leo and I are saying, we think we're good with it. You guys are also checking to it one more time. Just because little things might fall through the cracks and we obviously rather discovered that before. So um, and my hope uh with Andrea is Andrea, Andrea and I are working on that schedule, I think it's looking a lot better. Um, I started color coding it last week, and I think the only thing we wanna do is begin to publish that. In our regular meetings and just have to take out acronyms and things like that. So um, I don't quite have that done. So with that exciting intro. Um, I think Mr. Hardy, wanna try to share a screen? Yeah, I said, you wanna share a screen?
Did you send the link?
Uh, yeah, I'm gonna send the link, I'm sorry, I thought you were right. It's in the um.
Tim, were you gonna put it on the, on the zoom or you put it on the screen up there?
Uh, ideally both, I don't know if um, okay, if we can get, last time we had struggled with this. So, and uh. Let's see, I just got it out of the agenda center, so let's see. Jim, do you want me to um email it? Yes, I knew there was one thing.
The calendar invites go with my Gmail account, so.
Okay, is that the problem?
Yeah.
Okay, so this is going to your M A, do you want this to be your M A S C account or which one? Okay, good, yeah.
Tim, do you want to mirror to the? You can see an opportunity, you wanna mirror, you know, your advice there.
Thank you, Esther. Uh, you should get it. And the only uh.
Oh, go to the little um. Here, your computer that matters, son. We're trying to do it. Uh, to the right. You didn't have it last time. The mirror, yeah. Just what uh, yeah, shutting off.
Okay.
There you go.
Do you get it?
Sorry, I just bumped it.
If you wanna mirror. They could take uh, they almost regret it, this, so I can pick not mirror on this, so I can pick this. Have I stopped, oh yeah. I don't know, I could probably steal it back.
Share screen option.
These were all in technical text that usually.
Are you James?
Yes.
Okay, I'm in from Orchard. Now, Tim, if you want to go back to your screen mirror and if I'm not again, you should move.
Yeah, that was my fault, I really, the intention was to get here and then I picked up a call. We are now. Wrong, I think Leo, you said you have a. I think we were gonna try to wrap, do this, finish by ten thirty.
Yeah, I have, of course, I have a meeting, I've milked it, so.
Yes.
Okay. Policy of G A. The only uh recommended change we're making here is in the legal reference, because it is more than simply paragraph three, seven, eight, nine. Um, in, in twenty six, oh yeah. We just basically reference the entire section of twenty six point zeros. Next up, G B A, there's an updated version of this, because we updated the nondiscrimination policy, we highlighted the um. The expanded definition of race. I just have to copy it into here. Which includes the um protected hairstyles, not hair styles. Uh, G V D, school free staff communications, um. For some reason, Metfield has this in both places. Uh, both in G and B, which kind of makes sense to me because it's staff. School community communications. But um, we just thought we don't put it. Really put it in one place now that all the manuals are going online, there's probably no reason to have it in one place. What to you? Other than that, I don't have any recommended changes to that.
It's as a role in trying to. Deep, you know, they are simplifying.
You're not eliminating the policy, it's just you're keeping it in one place rather than two.
Yeah.
Right.
I support.
Staff ethics of conflict of interest, there's an updated version of this to comply with the state ethics commission. Uh, about new employees and then every business that after they're on happy to meet the uh. On ethics test. The highlighted paragraph right there.
I think one of the, one of the things that they've done now, at least, you know, in with the town clerk is. The state has developed a database so that it gets uploaded to that. So I don't know if we should. Change that where it says something where instead of giving a copy to the clerk, who's the town clerk in the superintendent's office. Or. Something about the statewide database, I don't know if that makes any sense or.
Yeah, I would still recommend they, they present a hard copy and then you can use the database and you have a hard copy, put the personal file.
Okay.
Um. The database is new.
Right.
And I'm not sure how the database.
Okay.
Give it four, five years and then maybe you can say, all right, if we. We've been in the system for five years now and it has many problems.
Okay.
Because I had to do it. And I did it last August.
Yeah.
And it's still not in the online database.
But not hard copy, no.
Yeah. Uh, next up, staff conflict, excuse me, staff conduct. Um. Again, just making some of the changes we talked about before, our school system, school district. Um, uh, district regulations to district procedures. And um. The opening paragraph's been reworded a little bit, it is highlighted here below. So that's a little bit different than what's. Again, the change from regulations. But. Just updating the language to more of an. Approach.
And that's given, that's been consistent theme.
Uh, gifts to solicitations by staff has also been updated based off our. Uh. Regulations issued by the uh. Ethics Commission on gifts to staff, class gifts. Solicitations.
Has that changed?
Yeah, well, it's, it's more, it's formalized now in that there's actual procedures for.
I see.
Specifically written for teachers. When it comes to gifts, gifts from students, um, class gifts, so for work. I just wanna point out that you didn't. You're not the enforcing agency for this, it's not, you're, you don't have to go in and. But if a teacher accepts a gift from one hundred fifty dollars, then someone complains. That's up to the, you know, the teacher. Um. Then one of the questions. In the ethics test is related to this. And it's like, if you receive a gift, a food basket that's more than fifteen dollars of value, how can you mitigate that? And then this will be, answer is bring it to the teacher's room and share it amongst your colleagues, therefore that value is. Cut by the number of people who participate, so who had access to it.
Right.
So if it's a five hundred dollar basket and twenty people participate, you offset the cost.
It's a five hundred, five hundred dollar basket that somebody has a really generous.
Well, I just use that as.
Yeah, that's a perfect example, that helps.
Because the numbers were easy in my head. Alright, um, and again, this is all specified in uh the CMRs, the regulations. Issued by the um state, the ethics commission. Next one up is a, a new one to you, uh, it's crowdfunding or crowdsourcing. Uh, online fundraising and solicitations. Um, there's prohibitions against public employees using public. Services to do stuff like this. So.
Sounds like using public computers, those kinds of things, email addresses.
Yep. And accessing database, like, anyone in person wouldn't have access to that.
Okay.
So if you were gonna send something out to all your students. Using a probably of your school district's information.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, next one up is a drug-free workplace policy. Um, the only suggestion we have is updating cross-references, because the Drug Free Workplace Act. Of nineteen eighty-eight, um, doesn't really give you the reference, whereas these two cross-references too. Next up is tobacco on school, tobacco use on school property by staff members, and again, can keep it consistently with the. Previous policy in section A. Going to the fact stating it is prohibited in the title, then expanding the definition of cigarettes to include. Um, cigars, tobacco, pipe tobacco, chewing tobacco, electronic cigarettes. Aerialization, so all that stuff. School facilities, school buildings, school grounds, school buses, school sponsored event by any individual.
That's great.
So if you're chewing from, is that some function, well, if you came in, no smoking facility, right, without having that event.
And is that, you're saying that was, we're updating something on this one?
Well, it's, it's, one is changing the, the language of the title could make it clear that. If your title was tobacco use on school property by staff members. Which implies. There's ways of doing it. Whereas stating is prohibited, makes it very clear that it's prohibited, but then we expanded the definition of tobacco. Which the Department of Public Health also did, which allowed us to do that. To include vape, arialization. And there's another one of these in the student section, coming up in section J, that talks about. Use on school property by students, and it just basically refers to the handbook for. Disciplining action, where this would be referred to the media supervisor. Okay?
Yes.
Staff personal security and safety, this is part of the safe school program, this would be a new policy to you. Both the languages that I found still has requirements for TV tests, which has gotten weird. And then adding a reference to the municipal's employee assistant program. Not here. Uh, domestic violence leave policy, this is also a new policy for you. Um, it is required. It's important to note that it's up to the school committee. To decide if this leave is paid leave or unpaid. It's written that it's unpaid, but if the committee decides to do so, they could make it paid.
So if we have someone that had documentation now. And they go to the superintendent for a leave. He or she would have to bring it to the school committee to see if it was.
Yeah, but that would be an executive session either because it's.
No, of course, I'm just trying to clarify.
Yeah, it's the employer of record, which is the school committee.
That would have to make that decision on this.
Right.
That's a case by case.
So I could grant the leave as superintendent, whether or not it's paid would be determined by the school committee, so that there isn't a lag time for the actually.
Right.
Right.
Yeah.
What is, like, is there similar? Reasons you grant paid leave or you, and my assumption is you don't have to.
Well, internally leaves and things like that, we.
It's automatic.
That's the violence leave law under the table leave act.
If we even leave, that'd be paid or unpaid.
And I'm just wondering if that's, this is a new policy to us.
Yeah, it is.
So is there any? Would we want default the? Opposite, you know, is that any such one?
I mean, if it was up to me, I, I want the default to be paid.
Yeah.
But if that's not what M A S C is recommending, then. Yeah.
Well, because if the committee wants to make it pay, we just change the length, it's, I don't wanna put a restriction or a requirement on them. They have to make that decision.
Honestly, I, I, I think it's just like a paid. I'm even bringing that to the committee.
Yeah, so if we do that, I just wanna market, like, I, I'd be curious, but to, to me, it sounds like it's something that you may inadvertently not do. And to me, it seems natural that you would, we would, we would want that to be paid. So why create a staff?
I would agree.
That now you're doing something that's outside our policy, and it was because of an administrative error, and you know what, we, we didn't catch it. So um, that's why, and even Andrea, as we work on the notes, let's flag it to make sure we're just, you know, just say it, we're going. Um, we're choosing this, even though the rec, the M A S C policy says the default is unpaid.
And so it's up to fifteen days?
Yeah, that's it, they have to exhaust all their other.
Yeah, okay.
Leave first.
Okay.
So for example, certain has to go to court.
Right. And they've used up all their.
Yeah, I mean, my default always is if someone's going through this anyway.
That's what I'm saying.
Why are you gonna ding him and not pay him, like, that doesn't, you know, they got enough on their plate, you don't have to worry about the financial.
Right, right. Yeah, I would default it to pay.
Yeah. But I just added, the school committee has determined that a domestic leave is due by the superintendent, shall be paid. Since the committee approves that, then that's all that's necessary.
Okay. Yeah, cuz I mean, I don't think it's our thing, exposure of, of things that we don't. And, and not, it's just like, why do we want, and it's just that much more to bring into. I agree.
Uh, family and medical leave. This is really all you need right here. All the details or the specifics are on employee posters that are on the federal postal list that every school gets an updated agreement of. So the attachment that follows this.
Yeah, but also the contracts, yeah. The detail, yeah.
So the uh dash E that follows this, all this can come out of the policy meeting. This is all the information that's on those employee posters. And if you wanted to keep it, I'd have to go back and update it, because this is out of date, based off of some changes. This took us some pages. Um, staff participation, local activities, the only thing we have here is change system in district. So just a couple of tweaks to the existing policy. Using personnel records, again, this is just gonna be the. District. System to district and the. Uh, G D K, staff complaints and grievances, uh, we have no recommended changes to this, our two policies are identical.
And the contracts will really drive that, right?
Absolutely, yeah.
We have the procedures and all the contracts.
Right, but we, we also recognize that there are some employees who don't have collective bargaining rights, and they're under an individual contract, so they may have. Uh, professional staff positions, again, just the one change here, school assistant, the school district. All the recommended changes. Uh, professional staff salary schedules. The, under principles, um. The term merit increases. We believe is, wasn't just before today, but salary increases, not merit increases.
So I would just say, you know, even prior to me arriving here, um, this hasn't been the procedure that the district has used around that, they. Have always had a management reserve account in the budget that the school committee approves, and the superintendent determines. Increases based on the approval of the management reserve. So I don't know how that fits in or. Would it be, like, could you put? That for principals using the management reserve account?
So the management reserve account is in the budget and that's, that's the, that's the set amount each budget season for all non-union employees.
Say. I'm, I, you need after wordsmith, um, notwithstanding a bond. The superintendent may use. Uh, you know, like, may use.
We golf these every year. Do we vote them?
You bought the line, yeah.
You bought the line over here, yeah. I guess, I guess that's the, the difference, is that.
Well, it says, it says that, you know. To bring back support for the recommendations, we never do that.
No, it's just on the budget.
Would you call it management reserve?
Management reserve, yes. So levels of compensation really is the management reserve account that you guys vote on, in my interpretation, but I'm not sure that's.
So do we have to put somewhere in there that if that's for? Non-union?
Well, it's up to the category of principals, then we can actually make it principals, administrators. Do it by all, right?
All non-union.
Don't know if you can see what I wrote. So um, school committee with the advice of superintendent will establish a management reserve line item within the school district project. To be used by the superintendent for several new adjustments, each is our unit. And since it times our principals and administrators, I mean, your personnel would apply to all. Is that work?
Yeah, that's, that's kind of process.
Okay. Well, that's why you're here, is to make sure we follow what the district processes. Okay, um, employment of principals. The. The, um, only difference really is that, that what we've inserted as the third paragraph is that the length of second is subject to the contracts of employment. Principals should be in accordance with state. And we couldn't spell it out in the details, but. It's just that the second contract has to be at least three years of length, unless both parties agree to a shorter time, maybe up to five years. And then citing the legal reference, so when this is online, you can actually click on the reference, it'll bring up the statute language. That's why we don't feel the need to spell it all up here. Uh, professional staff supplementary pay plans. This is basically the, um. Coaches, class advisors, faculty advisors, this school, student clubs. It needs to be said somewhere, and I don't know if it's in your contract or not, um, that these assignments are for one year.
They're one-year appointments.
Be a one-year appointment.
Maybe it couldn't hurt to put in a policy to. And to reinforce that.
But in, in, look at the top of the third paragraph, teacher who is offered and undertakes a supplementary pay, so will receive a supplementary contract specifying pay duration and terms. So this is how much it's gonna be, this is what it's for, and this is when it expires. And that's just like the appointment letter. It's not necessarily a contract, this is. You've been appointed to this position, this is what you're gonna pay, and this is outlines for. And in some districts where coaches assume their professional status because they've been in three years.
So that last line, the non-conversation for the position will be established by the committee at the time the position is created, that's what we, we just did with that, with the salary schedules. Right. For all, but we just did that in contract.
And that's where it's created, it's time. Um, professional staff vacations and holidays, I don't believe you need this, um, with unique personnel. All that stuff spelled on the contract, and in most cases, people on individual contracts have to spell it on their individual contract as well, so.
Yeah, I think the individual contracts all say that, um, holiday is recommended by the committee, I, excuse me, recognized by the committee will also be. That person, so it's.
Staff including posting the vacancies, again, it's just the updated language as far as school district. Uh, professional staff hiring, this is, uh, there's two versions of this. The big difference is the expanded non-discrimination.
So I just had a question on this one.
Yeah.
Um, in our current policy, it says no position may be created without the approval of the school committee. I think that's just not realistic operationally, and we have special education positions that need to be added immediately, and we, we do that.
But is it, is it, are you adding an F T E or are you creating a whole new position that didn't exist before?
F T E.
That's different.
Okay.
This is talking about, well, we, the reference here is that you're creating a new position that doesn't exist in a whole new JavaScript.
Got it, okay.
That's creating a professional position.
Okay.
Adding F T Es is budget.
Got it.
It's a budget discussion.
Satisfies my question on that, perfect.
Uh, part-time substitute professional staff employment, um. Are substitutes hired through the school or centrally?
They're hired through central office.
Interviewed by the, at the school level, recommended by the central office.
Alright, so periodically, they, or they're just.
I just, the last line or the last paragraph on that policy. School committee will set a daily rate to pay substitute teachers, including extended-term substitutes, so we assume that's long-term subs. A ladder will be granted such additional benefits as approved by the school committee, so we don't get health insurance or benefits for.
Okay.
Um, long-term subs. That not, it's not gonna practice the district.
Just so you know, this is an existing policy in Redfield.
Oh, I know that, yeah, I know.
Usually, if you, if you do, it's part of a collective bargaining agreement to teach association too.
Yeah, so the only part that is to the collective bargaining agreement. That we've talked about is the fact that, um, if they are, a bachelor is there to pay on bachelor's step one. If their masters are masters, they don't get a daily rate. Okay. So that's what we have.
And long-term subs, is anyone over a certain criteria?
So if it's a year, that's different than someone that's there for four or five weeks.
I'm okay with that. Uh, but philosophy of staff developments, um. And just school, this school system, the school district here. Uh, professional teacher status, um. The difference between the M A C policy and redfield policy is the first sentence of yours. We don't have.
So is that, do you not have the other professional employees in the M A C one, or do you just?
We just still have the whole first sentence.
Oh, okay. Yeah, and if we keep that first sentence in there, I think we might wanna add, um, teachers, um, maybe licensed teachers and. Certain other licensed professional employees, I know the clock doesn't start, they don't have their, if there aren't waivers, the clock doesn't start for P T S.
Right, correct.
So I wanna make sure that, that that's clear, if, if you guys wanna keep that in there, we should clarify that initially something.
Big, big sense. Okay, I believe these are areas where. The, the reason, M A S C may not choose to have it, redfield does, it's an extra. Effectively an extra, um, left word is layer. It's an extra requirement that we have. Which is a M A S is.
But I think, you know, I clarified it because there are definitely people that we don't characterize, they might fall into the teacher's contract, but you don't refer to them as teachers.
Right.
So it would just protect them as well, so they have that, I mean, I think it's fair to those folks.
Is June fifteenth your date?
Yes.
You know, some districts have an earlier date. Um, and then this one, um. I actually believe that this is covered in your collective bargaining agreement as far as assignments and transfers.
Yes.
Um, and I, I was worried about having policy language. In any area of the contract language, cuz the contract's gonna supersede policy anyway.
Right.
So I just basically always defer to the contract. So I would suggest you take this out. Let the contract speak for itself. Same with, uh, time schedules. Evaluation of professional staff, um. This is okay, it meets up with the, uh, the C R. This rest of this needs to go away.
That's pretty, I mean, that's splits our contract too. That's, that's good.
Well, the, this dash R language actually comes from the O. Evaluation process. So all this R one, R two. Again, in, uh, referring to contract reduction and force language.
And it's, this, this is coming out because it's in.
Covering contract, the contract would override your policy anyway. But the dilemma will be is if you have different language in two places.
Right.
If, if the contract's gonna be the rule, let it be the rule.
Yeah, really.
Resignation.
So Jimmy, you're saying the reduction force to take that up?
Yes.
Okay, yes, makes sense. We have contract language for this as well.
Yeah.
Especially, um. Requirements to, uh, pay the district back for certain things. Okay, I'm not, I'm just not sure what the, we have, we have three-day, I don't know what our contract says for the days, I have to look at that.
But if, but yeah, whatever's in the contract would be the rule anyway. Um, I think it's time for us to, to hold people to a three-day.
Yeah.
You can have it there as a target, but.
Yeah.
What are you gonna do if they leave?
I know.
Uh, retirement, this is just. Updating this, the, the school committee as. Is, in some part of it, it's also a legendary.
Right.
Consideration.
Sure.
Does not require them to take any action, I mean, just.
So can I just ask a clarifying question on that? To meet the requirement, can we, can we say the number of retirements versus the names, I know some people are really private about that.
Yeah, no, it'd just be, you know, and then if, if a follow-up question comes up, it'd be, you know, where are they on the salary scale?
Yeah, yeah.
You know, as far as, you know, individual names, no, but. If you have ten teachers retiring, we're on the top step of. One of the categories, I might have a budget consideration going forward, following year, if the replacements are gonna commit a law or something.
So, so we provide documentation there of budgets, we anticipate the retirement.
Yeah, that's exactly what would, and that's why, it's because it, there's, there's a budget implication. And anything budget related, there should be for you.
Yeah, I just wanna be clear, everyone's sitting there, so that's. There's something coming from that.
Uh, suspension dismissal of professional staff members. Um, here, it's just making sure that there's a system in place that I's and D's are crossed. Second version of this. This is, we, this was redone by the, um. With input from the F S Commission, is they actually created a F A Q for tutoring.
This is.
Again, let's, let's talk about tutoring, the definition is that the teacher's being paid not by the redfield public school system. By either by the parent or some third party.
Yeah.
So that's why it's right up front, that definition.
Okay.
Okay, so, um, if your child's in fifth grade struggling with math. Your child's current teacher, you can't pay that person, correct? To tutor your child, you could pay a different teacher that doesn't have your child to do that. What some people have done, what some districts have done, is set it up so that the parent pays the district. And the district pays the teacher.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Because that way the money's coming from their employer. Um, and the, it's kinda like must feed, you know, I mean.
Yeah.
If you wanted to set up tutoring and you want your child's teacher to tutor, this, that's a way, that's one way around it.
So the only time that we'll do this is in medical, you know, something like.
Right.
Where the district does.
Then they're not paying the person anyway, cuz if it's, if they're home by instruction, you're providing the.
Right. Need, do you keep it up for a second?
Sure.
Please.
I just fully, I need the whole page in.
Okay.
Well, the other thing they can't do is if they are tutoring for private, they can't do it in a school building.
Right.
Or a public library, they can't do it in a public building.
They can't do it.
Oh, not in a public building.
It's, it's running a private business in a public building.
Yeah.
Now, if they go in and they do a building use form and pay a rental fee, that's fine.
Well, what does it say in here in the public field, building? Uh, I think we should.
It says, well, it says class.
It says class.
Tutoring for pay is not to be done in a school building, very last line. For a school building, but it's public building, it's like the library.
Yeah, I know that it happens in a library.
But that's the library's problem.
Exactly, okay, exactly, that's, that's fine.
So you want to stay in school building maybe, cuz.
That's why I say that's wrong, cuz that's what you govern, so.
Right, yeah, I don't need anything else. So, um, the teacher may not tutor students who are currently in their class, even if the teacher does not recommend that the current student receive private tutoring. The teacher, can we say cannot, will not, should, seems a little wishy-washy to me. The only problem is, I guess, the enforcement piece, but should not tutor the current students, I mean, I think. Be more definitive in that language, I'm only, this is, I mean, I met, I met with the.
Well, we say a teacher may not tutor students who are in their current class, though we should say the same way the teacher. Cannot tutor our students.
Yeah, I just think instead of should.
So I have a question, so if there's a student that's. In the eighth grade. And high school teachers tutoring that student, right, cuz that's allowed. And then that high school teacher gets that student.
Can't continue tutoring.
Correct, so that's.
As soon as, as soon as they become.
So that's the issue, right, so that has, so um all the high school and middle schools um principals and department chairs had this conversation recently at Blas. Where someone could be tut, was tutoring someone a younger grade that may eventually be that person's teacher. Which the department has brought to us, we didn't even, you know, they brought it to us because they had a concern about it. So we just really gotta be clear about how this.
Well, it's not a conflict until. Signed.
Right.
To that teacher, that's when you can't do it for paying.
And at that point. They, I mean, theoretically, there's three or four, you know, there's a few that may tutor, and then that's just part of their process.
The problem is, we don't know, we don't, we don't, we don't do a tutoring list, this is all done outside, so if if Johnny's assigned to teacher A. In ninth grade, and teacher A's been tutoring Johnny for four years, we don't know that, you know, so it's gonna be hard to.
In that situation, the worst case scenario is, they now have the teacher who was tutoring them. Right, they may wind up having to see the teacher for extra help, and they can seek a tutor that's somebody else. The downside for the kid is the transition of the tutor.
As long as that happens, yes.
Correct, it's just, yeah, like, but and and it's, I think you're saying they're bringing it forward to you, the teachers know, they can't continue to tutor.
I think the department chairs brought it to the principals, who then brought it to the union and me, because they were concerned that that what you just described might not be.
Understood.
Yeah.
And and it, to me, though, like, I I thought, I mean, the hat that you have, that's. Best of the kids, alright, the most disruptive thing would be. They lose the tutor they've had for four years, but they, that tutor just became a teacher.
Correct. But but the point is that once that becomes a teacher, then that person has to stop tutoring.
Yeah, I get it.
You know what I mean, and it's just the supervision of that, which the department heads are just concerned about. But I think if we get something in writing, we give it to everyone, and it's very clear, you know.
Yeah, I mean, I'm referring to you on on just about all of it, but to me, I don't see, like, yeah, that's the rule, and that that seems obvious.
It does.
Reality business goes to, you know, music lessons, instrumental music lessons are most conducted in the school building. That it's like, there's a whole bunch of other things that go with that, uh voice lessons. If a coach is tutoring.
Then I circle back and then say which, what's the current policy.
I mean, I would say there's there's after school tutoring lessons for music that people have paid for for years, I think. And that's just part of the culture, you know, um I don't know, I have to look to see, I talk, I have to talk to my music person to see whether or not. That. That Medfield teach, because there's other teachers, not just Medfield teachers that do that.
Yeah.
If Medfield teachers are giving lessons to their students after school, I don't know about that. That's been, I mean, forever.
Then that goes into the running of private business.
Um, I think it's, well, I think the Music Association does the work on that too. Um, we have to, we have to take a look.
Again, you know, who pays the teacher?
So.
Does the, does the parent write a check to the Music Association, the Music Association pays it? It all goes back to the definition.
Right.
Who's paying?
Uh, so I think that's right.
Yeah.
It's like a connectivity.
That's different because the employer is paying, it's like a. I've been positioned.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, we we changed that, right? Yeah, it wasn't like that, we changed that.
Yeah. So that's, that's fine.
Okay, that's fine. Alright, good, that was not the way it was happening.
Yeah. Next one up, uh you switch, switch from um professional staff to support staff, that's the G C to G D codes. Just so you have a sense where we are. This one again is. Simply, the only recommendation is to switch from system to district, no other recommendations for this. And again, much like the professional staff, all new positions that you didn't have before. Are being created by the school, through both the school. Uh, support staff contracts and compensation plans, I have no recommended changes to the, oh, I do, actually. No, um. Oh, the overtime language. Divisional labor relations, seeing a couple of districts are not having language regarding overtime, even though it's spelled out of their contracts. But not everybody who's an hourly employee is under collective bargaining.
Yeah.
Uh, support staff supplementary pay plans, again, this is usually spelled off in the union contracts for those that get this. And even in uh same thing with fringe benefits, or it's either the contract or their individual employment contract. Same thing with use of absences, much like the professional staff one. Same thing with vacations and holidays.
We'll go back to the um support staff supplementary pay plans. So are you looking at getting rid of that?
Yeah.
Okay, good, alright, just one more, because that's all defined.
Uh, vacation holidays, same thing. Recruiting posting vacancies. Interesting, this is recruiting posting vacancies and then support staff hiring. I think each one's okay. You do probation for support staff?
Only because it's defined in the contract.
Okay, taking this out. This is each support staff employee will strip probation here for six months with any position.
So cafeterias.
That applies to anybody who doesn't have professional license.
Okay. We do the actual exploding secretary. Cafeteries, it's like. That's pretty clearly defined for us.
The diamonds and transfers. Be straightforward. Time schedules. So Jim, and you?
Sometimes forget, we use the lead source Medfield. Saying this is just, this is in law policy, and it's anyway, I guess it's putting in.
Well, it's just that I'm making edits so that when I activate the final version, the source line all disappears, because when you adopt it, it's all yours everywhere.
Okay.
It doesn't really matter that a kid wants to do.
And over time, I guess we would bring in things from, I may assume that we would put.
Well, you initially, but then once you adopt it, it's yours.
Yeah, I get it, and then once you have that nice pristine document with everything, then we bring in when we adopt, and we say source.
Uh, G D O evaluation of support staff. L A. I'm not sure, there's two versions of this, but I get kicked out of attitude towards students, attitude toward public education, attitudes towards teachers and fellow employees.
Interesting.
And then there's the second version that's covering major areas or employees' responsibilities, is job description, the formally basis, which have been evaluated, advanced evaluation.
So um what if we have that in collective bargaining, or we're working towards that in collective bargaining?
Then you wouldn't need it here. I would definitely not use the current Medfield.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, it's just like. And you, just again, you know, we go back to the old ways of doing superintendent evaluations where we, you know. Communicates well with staff, how you measure, you never determine anywhere what what the expectation is.
Do you have a recommendation for that one?
Yeah, this one right here, and just basically, the evaluation will cover the major areas of employees' responsibilities in the job descriptions. Like, you can evaluate what you're expected to do and how you do it.
And so it's, yeah, it's by design a little more gray.
Yeah.
Otherwise, you're putting specificity in something you can't.
Well, I mean, I mean, evaluating a food service worker would be different criteria than evaluating custodian or driving. And I mean, based on the job descriptions. Uh, support staff promotions. Recommendations for this.
Do you see that or?
Yeah. Yeah, the only ones that don't is if um parts of their support staff are civil servants. Like, it's a custodial staff, there are some cities where the custodial staff are civil service physicians, and that's all based on.
Because that was, the same language is in the contracts.
Uh, retirement. It is not for counting, right? Uh, suspension dismissal.
So I would just go back to this one again. When we just the retirement one, this one says superintendent will present with me the names of support staff.
Yeah, it shouldn't be.
So we do do that at the end of the year, we recognize them, but I still would rather not have the names, just for privacy.
Suspension dismissal support staff. Well, often I thought that two weeks is.
Yeah, yeah, two weeks is. You see that everywhere in two weeks, they're standard.
Yeah, but it's usually a tolerance check. There's two weeks of that.
Depending on the situation.
It does, it absolutely depends on the situation. And again, this is, yeah, suspension dismissal, get rid of that, reduction force.
Yeah, right.
The get ours as one extra paragraph, and the event of failure performance required, the superintendent may immediately suspend its. Language.
That should be, that's good.
And that is section.
Like four things for negotiations.
Do you see the comment, the Q and A? Next, it was a clarification of what we're talking about, um, music lessons. Just stating that they are actually paid to a district involving a count.
Correct.
Yeah.
Which.
Yeah.
We we changed that eight days ago.
Yeah.
It wasn't paid.
Right. So just somebody with a back in work. But uh David H.
I would say we're we're all air.
Oh, yeah, it's only four left.
It's only four pages.
Yeah, I actually remember when I looked this morning, and it's like, okay, one of them's very.
G was the big one.
Yeah, I was. It was weird, because when I looked this morning, I, for whatever reason, I looked at him backwards, and I was like, maybe I looked wrong.
Yeah. Me, you picked four more pages, Leo.
Well, just like after H at two thirds of the way through.
Come on, after yesterday, I haven't just started, we haven't even had coffee yet.
Okay, H A, no suggested changes to that, we'll see. Again, this is all um negotiations.
Can you just put it on the screen?
Oh, I'm not sure, I'm not. Oh, but they can.
We're still showing.
Still sharing, sorry.
No, that's okay.
I changed it on my laptop and not on this screen share.
Thank you, thanks.
Okay, H A, um, again, these are all laws related to negotiations.
I'm okay.
Okay. So I have no changes, recommendations for H A. Uh, or H B. The only, the only thing here. Is that negotiations between school committee and recognized employee groups are conducted subject to chapter one fifty E, national law, that's correct. The legal status of negotiations is defined in chapter, section two of that chapter. Which really talks about the employees' rights to. Organize. It really, that's, that is section two, it really should be citing section one. That talks about how the school committee is the employer record. Okay. So my suggestion would be that we change this to section one, and then copy in the language from one fifty E, section one. That talks about the school committee as the employer record that comes as collective bargaining.
I think, can we hyper work that instead of?
Well, it actually will be, if you look at the legal reference, it talks about section one.
So so we just.
Yeah, but I think in in here, um, it's beneficial, just because it's not gonna change.
Okay. So Tim, that part that that we're going over now is that the current policy has section two in one fifty E.
It should be section one.
Jim said it should be section one.
Is this, section two talks about the employee's right to organize, where section one talks. Where section one talks about the school committee's authority to bargain on behalf of the school. And that's really what we're talking about here now. I'm just gonna give it to myself. Uh, method of determining staff negotiation organizations. Um. This, this, of course, is out of the bottom, this one already is. This would be like way back when, uh. This, this really doesn't need to be here. They're already recognized and. Uh, negotiating school committee, negotiating agents. Um, this really, it talks about the school committee's options when it comes to collective bargaining and what they can and cannot do. Um, basically, they can negotiate by themselves, they can designate superintendent, they can hire. Legal counsel to do it, but in all those cases. The, the, the duties of that negotiator are specified in here. Which are pretty standard. It can even be a hybrid, that it's, you can have legal counsel participate, have a subcommittee of the school committee participate, have the superintendent available as part of.
So we've used the interest-based bargaining the last three contracts. Um, we're a sub, subcommittee of the school committee. Um, Michael and I, and then, you know, the teachers. And then at the very end, we have our attorney review of the employee for the school committee right by them.
Yeah, if it, if it works for you, that's great.
Yeah.
It's usually a lot more, a lot less animosity coming out of interest-based bargaining than. Traditional.
It's a lot cheaper. For sure.
Well, I mean, that's a factor, but.
Yeah.
I think the, just the. The overall sense of accomplishment is higher.
Absolutely.
And it's less animosity throughout the whole process.
It's worked well for us, that's for sure.
He is early, right? He'll do it early.
And that is section H.
I just want to, um, and just for my own. Memory on that. Did we? Was it a subcommittee or was it a? The way we did it? It was a.
You guys. It's going to two people.
Yeah. No, but yeah, at one point, I think there was debate, we could add or add kind of like a role of the only. Grabbing, we thought, nice idea, but not really practical.
Yeah, I think we did that once. And. The consistency needed to be there as part of the negotiations, that didn't work out at all.
Yeah, then, I mean, I was just looking at like the term negotiator. We're not really. We're, we're having a member of the school committee.
So they've always done it in the business group, so we add a chair and then.
Always negotiate.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
But there are plenty of districts, people will tell you that. The school committee and the superintendent sit there with their attorney, and the attorney goes back and forth. That's why I said it's, well, I mean. Kind of tongue-in-cheek vote being cheaper, but some, some districts are paying the two hundred and something an hour. Have the attorney sit with them to do that negotiations versus what we do, which is much more collaborative than.
Yeah, I understand. And I also understand how that, you know, once you've done it and that's the route you go. Theoretically, both parties are thinking, well, the attorney. The game benefits as well, you know, but it's not a, it's just to me, it's just becomes a layer.
Sure.
Um. Okay, I think we're, um, covered on that. Let's just take a look at the schedule one more time. And, uh, couldn't even share. And close it out. So, um, this is the schedule we've been working on, and I think the only thing I've been, Andre, this is what I had last week, was just starting the color code. Like each, so basically the merge documents are what we get from Jim. So we just did G and H. We had it scheduled for ten thirteen. Um. This was, I think that's ten twelve. Yeah, we, we brought the informational for E and F into our school committee. Meeting last night, so we would make that green, because like we've, you know, kind of crossed that gate. Let's speak with green, I have, oh, I don't have that. Green. Schedule for here, and then we put this. That would become yellow, saying we would bring this forward for informational. So it's, it basically becomes a staircase running right the way through. So the one thing, then, we go first reading, second reading. I think the one thing I would ask, like, I, I'm very. You know, you guys, we all made the right decision, making sure you were here for those, like, section G. Um, I, I may just add a column before vote that just says one more set of eyes. Where you guys actually just say, yeah, we, you know, either. Michael or you, or maybe you wanted Mary in some instance.
Right.
It just says a check off and say, yeah, we rejected as well.
Yeah.
Um, so, you know, so that's, that's proceeding along the way. I would like that to become something we can just bring forward. In our meetings, it's really hard, it won't be hard. Very, we've been calling it V one, V two, that's code Mary, or Andre and I have been using. Um, so we'll just clean that up and have that ready for November, as per the November meeting. And then, yeah, the next one, I think we would probably do as best we can with section I on the twenty seventh. Um, it's right in front of Halloween, so costumes are required.
Yeah.
We got our spices.
Sounds good.
Yeah. Okay, um, we did, uh, table the minutes, I just, because of all the travel, I didn't have time to do it, so we'll hopefully get these set up for this week. And, uh, just in the last meeting next week. And, um, is there any other, other comments otherwise, um, motioned up to adjourn?
Some moved.
Second, Tim.
I, yeah.
Thank you.
Twenty seven, it's twenty. Okay, nine o'clock.